We'll call this work session Monday, September 20th to order. Invocation given by Mr. Stewart and the pledge allegiance by Mr. Ashburn.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for this day we've had and we thank you for the many blessings you've given us. So I ask now that you'll watch over these proceedings and they'll be pleasing in your sight. Please watch over the citizens and employees of Scottsboro as they go about their daily lives and bring the military to their families. Guard God and direct us within when we may come to thee. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight is to present employee service awards. Mayor?
Thank you. Keep following me down front.
We're really happy to be recognized in service awards. Some of them are pretty extensive, several years that we will be recognizing. So as I call your names, you can come forward. Mr. Baker will have his pen and I'll have his paper. James Sanders, appreciation for your ten years of dedicated service to the city of Scottsboro.
Thank you, Senator.
Appreciate it.
James Jeffrey, appreciation for your ten years of dedicated service to the city of Scottsboro. Landon Baker, appreciation for your fifteen years of dedicated service to the city of Scottsboro. Congratulations. Chris Dan, appreciation for your twenty years of service to the city of Scottsboro. John Lee, appreciation for your twenty years of dedicated service to the city of Scottsboro. Derek Porch, appreciation for your twenty-five years of dedicated service to the city of Scottsboro. Thank you all. We also had three others. Randy Phillips, twenty years. Todd Shane, twenty years. And Karen Smith, five years. It couldn't be any better. So thank you all for your service.
We'll move on to number two, retail strategies. Mr. Rousey?
Mayor, council, thank you all so much for allowing us this time today and busy, I know work sessions, how busy they can be after working for the city of Foley for ten years and appreciate the time you've given us today. What we wanted to do briefly, this is Jeff Summers. And Jeff is a regional director of recruitment for this area. And what we wanted to do today is just share with you our process very quickly. And then, any questions that the council may have, please. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff right now and we'll go through the process.
Sure, yeah. Thank you all for having us. Again, I know we try to be quick and sensitive to your time. Jeff Summer, I'm the portfolio director and I handle North Alabama. So if we were to work together, I would be the face that you see every day, which is good or bad, I don't know. But glad to be working with cities across the state. And really, our role, working with our client cities, is to be your matchmaker. Finding the retail brands that aren't in your market, putting Scottsboro on the map, putting sites in your market, in front of them, and playing matchmaker and bringing them together. So I'll be very quick. When we come to the market, we identify the sites that are available. You obviously have some great news coming to Scottsboro. We saw the dirt being moved up there, which is fantastic. That only helps more development come when you have a good brand like that coming to your market. So it would make our job be that much better as far as catalysts come to the market. So we identify the sites. I work with a colleague named Drew Kaufman. He's our retail recruiter. And every day, we're on the phone, calling retail developers, calling tenant reps, and really trying to put our client cities in front of them, put the opportunities in front of them. We identify sites, we identify the prospects, we use demographic information. Obviously, the census has changed, so hopefully we'll see some good numbers coming out of that. But really, it's understanding who's growing in the southeast, what makes sense for your market, and being tenacious, just being persistent. There's not a lot of secret to real estate development. Really, it's just knowing the market, knowing who's growing, and being willing to pick up the phone and make a phone call. I pride, myself, when I deal with my clients, I want to keep them up to date. I want to let you know what we're doing, who we're talking to. Sometimes somebody may come to a market, there may be a project happening that I'm not aware of. And that's okay. I may even learn from our mayor or our city council person that that's happening. We don't take credit for that. I tell you what we're working on, who we're talking to. You may ask a question, hey, can you reach out to so-and-so brand? And I'll say, sure. We'll go get feedback. It may be a no, which is okay. Sometimes they say, hey, we're not coming to that market yet, they're not ready for us. And we tell you why. So maybe we can work on certain things, or maybe it needs to be a population, or maybe it needs to be a site-specific issue. So I really try to be strong on reporting back to the clients, whether it's, you know, every other week, whether it's Zoom call, phone call, email. I have a screenshot here of Basecamp, which some of you may have heard of that before, which is an online platform. But it shows you kind of how consistently we try to be in communicating back to the city. Now, obviously, we can't talk about prospects in front of the entire world. We can't let information get out every single week on who we're talking to. So we may have to type these updates and saying, hey, we're talking to a national apparel retailer, we're talking to a national coffee user, here's where we're looking at, we sent them some sites, this is their feedback. So it's all about communication. It's all about trying to build the trust between us and you guys. So that's something we pride ourselves on. You have a wonderful market. I think the future is bright for Scottsboro. I think we'd work well together. I do have a few handouts. Go ahead.
I'm going to add a couple of things to that in our process. One of the things with our process is it's really important that we have somebody at the city that we can download this information to. Honestly, all of you council members, you've got, you know, you're doing this because you love Scottsboro. And you've got your own businesses. So that's one of the key factors to where Jeff and his team can continuously load that down, download that to that person, or vice versa. That person could call Jeff and say, you know, we've got this work session, we've got this council meeting, and we need to know, update, you know, tonight or whenever, on where we are with so-and-so and so-and-so. So that communication is really important. And that's something we find, when I was, and I can use a personal experience, when I was with the city of Foley, I was the economic development director. And so I worked directly with retail strategy. So I was that person. And so I know firsthand on how important that is. Because I would usually get downloaded at council meetings or work sessions for an update, and how is this particular deal going, or so on and so forth. And it is a process, especially when you're dealing with national retailers. Example, it took us over four years to get the Academy Sports to come to Foley, Alabama. We went through two real estate reps, Academy, great guys, but they didn't believe in, they didn't believe in Foley. Third real estate rep we got in there, he believed in Foley. So you just never know, you just got to stick with it. And these guys here do a great job of that. That's what we pride ourselves in.
Yeah, and one example, real quick, Steve Coleman is a client of ours, and they had a Bojangles Go Bacon. So obviously, that's employees that lost a job and tax dollars that weren't coming in, and a brand that was no longer in the market. However, in our eyes, that's an opportunity. We were talking to Chipotle. We knew they were interested in Coleman and being there. But what you have to do is you have to have a site, you also have to have a developer willing to go buy the property and get the investment piece. So we knew Andrew Cronin with Ty Water Development. We said, hey, Andrew, you know they want to be in Coleman, I'm just the consultant, I'm kind of the middleman, I need you to come in here, tie up this piece of property, and let's go talk to Hal Hobgood. He's the real estate director with Chipotle. We saw him at the ICSC show, he told us where he wanted to be in Alabama. So we started just bringing people together. So we bring them together, we get out of the way. I report back to the client and said, hey, we're talking to a national fast casual, you know, Mexican-themed restaurant. They take about, you know, 2,300 to 3,000 square feet. They're looking at the Bojangles site. We're not at Letterman Tent yet, but they're negotiating that right now. So that deal happened, and now they have a Chipotle in the Coleman market. So just a kind of inside look of how we operate. But that happens all across the state every day with our client cities. So that was kind of quick.
That's, we've got a couple of handouts for you. And, but first of all, any questions from council members? Any questions that you'd like to ask us while we're here?
I do. I think the biggest thing with us would be, we've talked about this before, is how do we know, you know, how will we know that y'all set this up, you know?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's, yeah, it's a great question. And again, it goes back to communicating to you, the client. I've never taken credit for something we didn't do, but I'm always glad to tell you what part of the scenario that we're involved in. It may be simply, hey, I sent the property flyer to the brand, and they said they liked it. So then I had that information, and then I gave it off to, you know, a broker or developer and said, hey, we want you to come to Scottsboro, this brand's interested. And I tell you that. I tell the client what I've done. I don't say, hey, you know, we bought the property when I didn't buy the property, that's not my role in this deal. So I'm very specific about what part of the process we're involved in. Sometimes it's just sending them demographics and saying, hey, we're showing a growth rate in Scottsboro, or they went up in their average incomes, that was the piece I was involved with. But a lot of times, it's focused on the real estate, getting the flyer, or getting the, you know, property in front of the right person. And I verbally just tell you kind of where we're at. You know, we garnered some interest, that's as far as it went, or they said, no, they're not interested right now. So it's developing that trust, it's a communication. You know, I know there's been some different players in our industry that maybe do things a certain way, but we pride ourselves on building that trust with our clients.
That's part of our company value. It's very important to us to be very, very upfront with the clients. And we're not going to be able to recruit all retailers. But I can tell you, within our organization, the number of retail representatives we know, developers we know, is a plethora of folks. And we are on the phone with those folks every day, working for our cities that we represent. And we could certainly give you examples of that. We'd love for you to call those folks to check us out.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and pass these out. First one is a stack of, you know, references, letters of recommendation, people that have worked with us in certain markets. And the second one is a screenshot of Basecamp with a client, and you can see the day and kind of how consistently we try to be in communicating. Sometimes it's phone calls, that's not necessarily shown there, sometimes it's text messages or emails back to the client. But again, communication is key, and then, you know, letting you know kind of what we're working on.
One of the other things that kind of got in the back, got pushed back with COVID, but are the ICSC meetings and all the different conferences we go to. Retail strategies, we spend a lot of money at those particular shows. And we basically set it up to where we have a meeting every 30 minutes. So we've got all of these different retailers, developers, hospitality people, restaurants, coming into our booth to have a meeting every 30 minutes. And so when we can represent a city, you're getting in front of a lot of people. In addition to that, we're getting a lot of names. And we follow up, very important to us that we always follow up. And so I think Jeff said it best, it's a process, and you have to be a stickler. Squeaky wheel gets the grease a lot of times.
I can't tell you how many times I've followed up a particular brand, they said they were somewhat interested two years ago. In fact, we have a sporting goods group going to a city in Alabama, they've been working on it for four and a half, five years. And it just, it just takes time. I think we can be a little quicker than Scottsboro. But again, it's the squeaky wheel, it's being persistent, you know, it's sometimes it's taking no, not right now, and then you come back to them, and you stay on top of them. And, you know, I believe in our track record, and again, some of those references will speak to that.
And I know we've tried to keep it specific, but our company works in a lot of other areas too. And whether it's incentive areas, or keeping up to date with the latest and greatest tools for the toolbox for economic development. And Lacy Beasley, our president, had was real active in the COVID situation and trying to help cities figure out how to manipulate and work that the best for their small businesses. So we're a, we're a pretty broad outfit. You get a lot of value. Oh, for me and the rest of us, your names again? Jeff, what?
I'm Jeff Summer, S-O-M-M-E-R, and this is Jeff Rousey, R-O-U-Z-I-E.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
President, I think that the concern that the council had on some of the past places, or past people that we had doing this, was that we didn't know where we ever stood. We didn't know if we were paying money to, and not getting any contacts or not. I think that's something that we, we would have to be kept up to date on.
Sure, sure.
Yes, sir. And Mike, I'm glad you brought that up, because another thing, our contracts are standard contracts. There are no incentives built into that contract. What you see is what you get. So we're working for the city of Scottsboro.
And how long normally is your contract?
It's a one-year contract, but it's a three-year renewal. Because it takes, like we've said, it's a process. And if you were thinking about just hiring us for one year, I would, I wouldn't recommend it. It needs to be looked at as a three-year process, but, you know, things change. And it may be a situation where economically, things change. So you always have that out after one year. It's straightforward, it is, there's no hidden clauses or anything like that.
Yeah, and I see ourselves as an extension of your economic development office. You know, we're down the hall in Birmingham, but I mean, you know, we're part of your team to help build, to bring jobs and build up the economy in Scottsboro. So that's kind of how we view it.
Anyone else have any questions? We appreciate y'all's time. We'll move to number three, discussed approval of the 10% of the budget. The remaining amount of the budget will be $2,455,827. That'd be the remaining 10%. Anyone have any questions or discussions on that?
Mr. President, I've got a comment if I could.
Yes, sir.
One thing that hadn't been mentioned in this, in this budget, that I think is very important, is y'all have included a 2% pay increase for all city employees. And I just, on behalf of the city employees, I want to thank you for that.
I appreciate the group and the time we put in, and I believe it serves well with the great employees of the city of Scottsboro. And I'm glad that we could do that this time. Anyone else have any questions about the budget? If not, we'll move that to be approved, to be voted on next meeting. Number four, public hearing for alcohol license for Mr. Patel, quick mark. Is Mr. Patel here? Not being here, we'll strike that for tonight, then. We'll move to number five, public hearing for alcohol license, Miles Smith for cattle stampede. Mr. Smith here tonight? We'll strike that tonight, too. Number six, public hearing for alcohol license for Katie Kirkland doing business in the city of Scottsboro. Ms. Kirkland is here tonight, so. Yes, you can go ahead and discuss it first.
So this license is for the barbecue cook-off for the Beer Garden. Brent approached me and asked if we would do this on behalf of the city, because the LLC that was previously doing it had expired and they had not renewed it. So this would just be me taking responsibility as a city employee, we would just be serving beer, and it's just for that one day, from 12 to 6:00. So do you have any questions, or?
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Kirkland, before we have our public hearing on that? So this will be the time and place for a public hearing? For the alcohol license for Ms. Kirkland doing business in the city of Scottsboro for the barbecue cook-off? And anyone here for this? Anyone here against this? Mr. Morgan? Give him a chance to speak. Mr. Morgan, I'd like to go ahead and give you a chance to speak if you'd like. Yes, sir.
It's tight over there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. You know, there's several nonprofits. Of course, the main nonprofit, since this is a barbecue cook-off, is the Scottsboro Community Events. I've got a, this citizen says, well, you're assigning a city employee to sell alcohol. Now, I realize maybe there's been other events that's gone on in Scottsboro, but, you know, there's also a nonprofit involved here, the Scottsboro Community Events. And they had this problem with selling alcohol. Why? I mean, it's their basically event, they're receiving money from it. This time, as I understand it, since part of the, I guess the tourism funds goes to the different communities, CDA gets a bit, and RDA gets a bit, and so does the, I guess the community events gets a bit. So is the city also going to buy the beer so a city employee can sell it? Of course, with funds coming back to the city? I don't know, this citizen's got a problem with that, and that's the reason I'm expressing it. If it was the nonprofit entities doing this, whether it be Main Street, or whether it be the barbecue nonprofit, all right, I probably wouldn't say anything. If it's Main Street, I might say something, as I've discussed with an attorney about this, as far as censorship goes there. But anyway, again, this citizen's got a problem. When you come forward, it looks like the city's going to buy the beer. Is that a purpose of the city, buy beer, alcoholic beverages? And then, is it a purpose of the city government to sell the beer profits coming back to the city? I mean, can, are y'all going to be selling drinks up here at the bar? I mean, I know you may think that's silly, but in a way, it's not. I'm just questioning the purpose of government. You're our stewards, this citizen's saying, I don't think that's good stewardship. Any questions?
No. Appreciate your time, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could respond to my question?
Sure, go ahead.
In the state of Alabama, if one buys alcoholic beverages, where does one go? To the state store. Where do they buy it? From the open market? Where do they sell it? The state store. Where do other than people selling alcoholic beverages have to go to buy alcoholic beverages?
State store.
The state store. The Goose Pond Board has sold alcoholic beverages for a number of years at its entities. The city of Scottsboro has sold alcoholic beverages for at least the last 20 years at the Scottsboro Civic Center. There is no legal problem here. I can understand Mr. Morgan's concerns, but there is no legal problem here, in my opinion.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Kimmer, can you read the investigative report?
Yes, sir. The investigation report is rather simple, but interesting and ironic in a way. The applicant's the city of Scottsboro. It's a special events retail, seven days or less license to take place at the barbecue cook-off festival. The parking lot adjacent to 126 Peach Tree and 132 Peach Tree is where it will take place. Personal background investigation, no record indicated. There were surveys done, eight, no objections, no objections. The nearest church, school, and residence meet code. The floor space is not applicable, as it's going to be held outside in the parking lot. The license application is in order. The health, fire, building, and zoning inspections all comply.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmer. That will conclude our, our public hearing on that. Anyone have any questions? If not, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Number seven, discussed tourism grant for the Scottsboro Barbecue Festival. Mr. Goodowans?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Kelly Goodowans. I'm here on behalf of the Sixth Annual Barbecue Festival here in Scottsboro. We've had a miss last year, because a lot of things were missed, but we're back completely strong this year. And we're expanding to a great degree. And one of the things that we're doing is, y'all may have heard of Johnstonville Brats, or Johnstonville Brats, as some of us in the hollers say. Anyway, it's a sausage company, and they have a, like a 65-foot tractor trailer that they drive around from festival to festival. And they jack it up the front of it, and it's a 65-foot grill, and they grill brats, and they give them to people for a donation. So, and all the money this year for being given as donation is going to nourish one child, which was chosen as an organization. So that's a new thing. We're also having a world-famous pep parade, if anybody wants to bring their dog and walk across the stage, and all the other regular activities. And I'm here, hat in hand, to ask you to continue your help to us in an amount of $5,000, which is normally what we come and ask for, and you've so generously given us. So, thank you.
Anyone have any questions, Mr.? Is the normal amount. It hasn't changed. So we'll put that on next week's meeting. Number eight, discussed the resolution to award the pool chemicals bid. Mr. Kimmer?
The city posted one bid, mailed two bids, and received one bid for pool chemicals. The lowest responsible bidder who met specifications is Anders Pool Company, and is recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to Anders Pool Company.
Any questions on that? If not, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Number nine, discussed the resolution for the award the RecCom cleaning bid. Mr. Kimmer?
The city posted one bid, mailed eight bids, and received three bids for cleaning services. It is recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to Hester's Cleaning Service as the lowest responsible bidder that met specifications.
Anyone have any questions on that? My only question, Mr. Wood, I don't know if you'll know this offhand, does that price, did it change?
For the second one, for the same bid?
Yes. Okay. We'll put that on next week's meeting also. Number 10, discussed the resolution to award the fuel bid. Mr. Kimmer?
The city posted one bid, mailed four bids, and received three bids for fuel. It is recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to J A T Oil in Chattanooga, Tennessee, as the lowest responsible bidder that met specifications.
Anyone have any questions on that? If not, we'll move that to next week's meeting. Number 11, discussed the resolution to award the oil bid. Mr. Kimmer?
The city posted one bid, mailed three bids, and received one bid for oil and lubricants. It is recommended by the bid review committee that the bid be awarded to Jackson County Oil as the only responsible bidder that met specifications.
Any questions on that? Any questions on that? Move that to next week's meeting also. And number 12, discussed the resolutions for the CDBG ED Grant for the Sewer Service Shops of Scottsboro. Mr. Green?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, Council. You should have the resolution. It's just to award the project. I think you have the bid tab as well. If you notice that the bid tab has a deduct. The deduct was for open cutting the road versus boring. It's a $2,100 thing. And Josh, and the mayor, and myself agreed that we would not take the deduct, that we would just let them bore under the road, since the street is fairly new. We thought maybe it would mean some savings, but it didn't calculate to me to enough savings to warrant cutting the road, the brand-new road. So, the award would be for the 279, 109.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Green? Just, Mayor, this would all be covered under the grant, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And it is within budget.
Okay, yes, thank you. That being, no other questions, we'll move that to next week's meeting also. That will conclude our meeting. There's no delegations tonight, so we'll go straight to reports. Mayor?
Just a couple of things. First, I'd like to say thanks to Chief Latimer and Scottsboro Police Department for their work Friday with the Homecoming Parade, and thanks to all the citizens that actually came out to enjoy it. I had a lot of comments about your presence during the parade, so thank you. Last week, the council approved an application for the city to support participation in the Alabama League of Municipalities Economic Development Academy. I was notified Friday that we have been selected to participate in this first Economic Development Academy. So, thanks to the council for supporting this, and we look forward to working with this in the next year. It's a year-long program, and we're excited about participating in it. And that's all I've got, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl?
Just like to congratulate all the employees that got their service awards this evening, and thank everybody for coming out.
Thank you. Ms. Dahl?
Just thank everybody for coming out. And I continue to say, mask up if you have a chance, get your vaccines, and continue praying for our city and in our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ashburn?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming out.
Mr. Stewart?
I too like to thank all the city employees for their service. They're doing a great job, and we are very honored and privileged to have them working here for our city. They do a great, work very hard, and it's sometimes a thankless job. So, we do thank you. But I don't have anything else. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. We are very blessed with employees of City of Scottsboro. I just want to say, thank you, Jimmy Green, again. It's nice seeing you here. And if you've never had to use the rescue squad before, they're an amazing group. And I got to witness it straight up last weekend, and so, the weekend before last now. But, and they're just an amazing group, and I appreciate them so much. Thank you. We will meet again next Monday for our meeting. We are adjourned.